Good evening, good folks. We will call our February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting to order, and we will entertain motions.
I move to enter into exec session, executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual pending litigation, proposed memorandum of agreements with various bargaining units and the annual evaluation of the superintendent.
My second.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Karen. Discussion, debate, questions? All in favor? We are entering to executive session. We anticipate returning around seven P. M. Thank you very much, good folks. Can you go? Excellent. Thank you all very much. We're returning from public session. We will continue on with our agenda, which includes the receiving and hearing of delegates. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Dr. Blair, like here to help us.
Yes, so our first speaker is Yayo Yikoizumi.
Hello, is it working? Okay, great. Good evening.
The microphone.
Hello. Okay, hello, okay. Hey, good evening, members of school board. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak. I'm Yayo Y, the founder of Zero Waste Ithaca. Our organization secured six thousand four hundred dollars last March to fund stainless steel sporks, which is a type of utensil aiming to replace single-use utensils currently in use in the district cafeterias. Today, I want to provide you a brief update about the initiatives. And the first, I'm going to start with a good news. The district, school district, I am, I was informed, was nominated for an award called the Fisher Award, sponsored by the Town of Ithaca Conservation Board for the reusable spokes initiative. I think that is a great news. However, I want to make sure that the program is has some substantial progress, which is something I want to speak about. The nearly a year ago, we received the funding. So that was March last year. Now it's February. And funding was for all twelve schools in the district. The progress has been slower than we expected. The pilot that point the middle school faces significant challenges with a concerning sixty percent loss of spokes. Despite promises since last October, we are still waiting and the Dan Bremen, thank you to him. We are hoping that we will have a meeting soon, but it's been promised since October. And so so far, we introduced to only two schools out of twelve. For a funding we received back in March, so it's been twelve months. In a most recent bi-weekly meeting, we invited Amber Schmidt from, we think disposable, it's a national nonprofit working on reuse in school cafeterias. So we met her with Dan Beth and Cindy Kramer, Green Team teacher for the district. And I want to also let you know that the funding for this initiative from this like a nonprofit, everything, like a plastic-free restaurant, is solely raised by the CEO, John Charles Mayer, who is a volunteer, a single father of a young child. And he's heading this nonprofit, he's a small nonprofit he founded. And this highlights the concerns about the sixty percent loss of spokes at the piloted schools, delays in education and planning, and exclusion of us from the planning processes. Amber Schmidt stresses, stressed in the meeting, the urgency of reaching out to all schools in the district for education and planning, regardless of current dishwasher availability at elementary schools, because they need to be informed that the spokes are coming and that we need to build anticipation. And everybody needs to understand that the spokes are not for throwaway. We're going to try to move from the throwaway culture to reusables.
We are past our three minutes. I want to make sure I'm being respectful. Are you nearly finished with your statement as well?
Ah, yes, we are. Zero Waste Ithaca is eager to engage with each school, facilitating open conversations. And in conclusion, I'd like to urge the board member to consider the initiative, the importance for a district, health of the students, and the budget, and environment, and justice. Let us collaborate to overcome challenges and move forward to a more sustainable future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. And if you want to leave the copy of the statement, we'll make sure all board members get it if that works for you. We do not have anybody else that's signed up. Board responses?
We will be discussing this briefly for an update from Mr. Bryman on Thursday at the facilities committee meeting. So we'll be talking again about spokes briefly on Thursday.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
That will bring us to our student reps.
Yeah, okay, so I've done that pretty calm past few months, one thing that a lot of students are excited about, really upcoming Vietnam.
It's on us.
On the upcoming Vietnam War, our trips were assumed to apply last year to one of the plans that was preparing for the past year, getting the opportunity to take extended international trip to the country. I'm really happy that these numbers opportunities exist, which is I just, we think that they're really good for that experience.
Flip the button.
Some things we discussed with Mr. Trumble and Mr. Bryman since the last board meeting were little things such as clocks, recycling, sparks, and cafeteria food. More specifically, we talked about making use of the larger security package that comes with the clocks and pushing forward the recycling initiative and getting lids for our bins. We also observed that there were efforts to evaluate the new lunch system, such as a survey sent out to the whole school and visits of our schools cafeteria from Chef Anne's Foundation and ICSD administrators. We are curious to hear about the student survey results and if there has been any more positive feedback since the FAQ page and other communication has about dining has been sent out earlier this calendar year.
Well, in less serious news, I'm sure you all know Valentine's Day is coming, and I'm sure IHS students will be involved in various celebrations acknowledging those you love. From us, the reps of the board, to you, board members, we wish you a happy Valentine's, full of love and capitalist fervor. In in more specific and realistic updates, the recycling, as Claire mentioned, we are hoping to be cutting our own lids sometime in the future. It's taken a lot more weeks than we wanted, but there's been some complications and issues, and we really appreciate the hard work of Mr. Scott Taylor and Dr. Bryman to help us get this program up and running. Additionally, we are hoping to have a meeting with Dr. Bradwell about math acceleration in classrooms, and even if we don't change each other's minds, I still look forward to the opportunity to hear your side of the story. So we appreciate that and look forward to it now.
LACS.
Hello, LACS has also been relatively quiet since the last meeting. On Monday, we had this month's site-based council meeting where we continued our discussion around the school's decision-making document and also talked about learning and technological needs within the classroom.
Trips Week is coming up in the middle of May. And we have a lot of great trips returning and new. Spanish trip to Granada being one of them, Katrina relief, which is a service trip to New Orleans, Aqua Sazne trip, rock climbing, and we have three different camping trips, one to Adirondex, one to Assateague Island, and one at the National Forest. We also have one centered around making a fiftieth anniversary anniversary of LACS Ithaca Parade Flow, which is definitely a highlight, and also a cultural identity exploration trip, which is not totally set in stone in terms of what that will look like, but once the group of students has been decided, they will have say over what they feel would be a beneficial destination for that.
It is considerably unsafe to bike to LACS. There's no bike lanes on Elm Street. The shoulder is littered with potholes and vehicles pass bikers within inches. We understand that city planning is outside of the district's purview, but we're wondering if anyone knows who we could talk to about this issue or if it's possible to put up a sign to warn drivers of cyclists.
So the shelter by the tennis courts at IHS, where our kids get on the transfer bus in the morning, has been blown down. And when the weather is very bad, we've heard that it can get very cold and snowy for some of the kids, and we're wondering if it could be considered to fix or replace the shelter that was there before.
So today we had Dr. Tori Nguyen, who specializes in restorative justice training and has done other trainings similar around the district, come to our school, which is a really great opportunity. ACC Committee, which is Alternative Community Court, is looking to kind of revamp our system and the cases which we can handle, which if you don't already know, handles like minor violations of rights or neglect of responsibilities. So vandalism, smaller conflicts, things like that. And we're really looking to expand how we respond to things like that and to hopefully have it be a more inviting environment for those cases, so that training was a really great opportunity for our students to learn more about that.
And finally, last meeting, we asked about the possibility of LACS getting spaces available in the IHS Drivers Ed courses. And we're just wondering if that's still a possibility and what can be done to move it forward. And I think that's all we have.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you all for your updates. Before we ask for board updates, I will acknowledge that we have two board reps who, speaking of math, participated in a very prestigious math program, the American Invitational Mathematics Examination. So congratulations to Moon and Claire. Fantastic. We should give you a round of applause. Hey, Ma, my hope is that we actually do not change each other's minds. My hope is that we learn from one another, so I'm very much looking forward to this conversation. Other board responses that folks may have. Yes, Dr. Trip.
I can handle two out of three. As far as lane markings for bicycle routes or signage, you want to be talking to the Department of Public Works. And I think the way you get the best attention is to send a small contingent to do public comment at a common council meeting. So you should do that ASAP. There also may be some funds left over from the Justin Panzer Memorial Fund that was set up years ago. And that might be a way to move things along more quickly if if there were funding available, because the Department of Public Works always worries about how much various things will cost, but that would be, that would be the way to go and keep us posted on your progress with that. The second thing I didn't know about the shelter over by the tennis courts, I'll look into it, and we'll try to talk about it at facilities, at least briefly, on Thursday and see what the plans are for that. I'm sure. And I don't know a thing about Drivers Ed. Because I couldn't get into it when I was in high school.
I'm not sure that will be a committee, but we will find an answer, an update, or we'll make sure that Dr. Brown is required and mandated to give an update. Well, he has time during the superintendent's report, or it may take another week for us to get to it, but it's on people's radars. Additional board responses, yes, Karen.
I just have one quick one for you, Leo, and we're working on kind of rebooting some legislative advocacy work. And I think the bike idea is something, it would be a really great thing to collaborate on, so I love what Jill suggested, and you keep us posted, and we can add that to our list. And we'll probably have an update for everyone at some point as we get going again, but one of those is one of the things on the list is climate change and kind of preparing for it and, you know, advocating along with the city and the county to have better bike lanes all across the area seems like a really good idea for so many reasons, so. I love that you brought that up. Thanks.
And I would have to, I love you brought it up because I live on Elm Street, and I bought a bike, and I'm frightened to ride it on Elm Street, so I would love to see some progress. And do you know where the Justin Panzer Fund resides?
I do know.
That might be something to. Justin Panzer, he was an ACS student who was killed on Elm Street riding a bike a bunch of years ago. That's one of the reasons I'm scared.
Do you have a agenda item related to memorial fund?
Right, we're talking about a city fund, though. Yes, but but there are comments still holes that we may be able to do something as well. And I'm sure that Dr. Trip will be reaching out to folks about possible facilities. There may be a way in which ICSD can put a sign on its property. It would not help with the bike lanes, but in terms of awareness, particularly on parts that are near ICSD property, we'll have a conversation. I'll work with with Dr. Trip on that.
Speaking of a lot of resources, an additional resource is the the group that is responsible for developing the city's comprehensive plan, which is the long-term vision for how the city should look, is the Planning and Development Board. They have public comment the fourth Tuesday of every month at six P. M. You just need to show up, and it's in council offices.
And feel free to email us, and we can give you this information as well, right? So so we're not trying to capture it all. Absolutely.
I said a couple of things. There'll be there'll be some more discussion about, you know, all things related to math at the next curriculum committee, so we'll be talking more about that there, too. And also, a little lighter, but but Dr. Trip and I have have gone to a few different schools and had lunch at the different schools, and one one observation was at LACS. We were on a very long line, but the very long line moved very, very quickly, and we were able to get our lunch very quickly. So I just wanted to speak to that because I think there's a little bit of a perception that that lines are long, and sometimes people feel like, oh, I don't know if I'll be able to have enough time. And we sort of experimented with that. So anyway, it was it was a positive experience. So well, I'd be interested to hear about the survey results as well, but a small anecdote, so.
Thank you, good folks. We will continue on with our agenda. We'll ask for it to be moved and seconded, and then we will have a dialogue particular about one of the key items that's on the consent agenda. So entertaining motions for the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Jill. There's agenda item, which is six point one, which is a resolution to approve emergency project declaration. This in regards to fixing what took place at Fall Creek Elementary School. And we'd like to invite someone to come give the board a little bit more information about what we have the information here, but we'd like for it to be broadcast as well. Good to see you, Ms. Verba.
Hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for the district. One of the elements that we work through in the business office is both insurance claims and also the capital project book. This actually falls under both. When unfortunate circumstances happen to our buildings, such as a car entering into that addition to the building and causing some damage, there's immediate responses that are needed, and then there's long-term fixes that are needed as well. As soon as those things happen, we file an insurance claim. An adjuster will come out. Those recoveries will be given to the district upon the inspection of that and an estimation of what the project will be to essentially return it to its basing kind. The law allows for us to remediate immediately for any kind of emergency or danger that 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 might occur, and we were able to close up that space. We had people come in, look for any structural damage. The good news is that really just by able to cover that wall, we're not going to occupy that space, but, you know, the staff can go in and get their equipment and still do teaching as normal. To remediate that, though, permanently, it's really nice to be able to declare something like that that's completely out of our control as an emergency, which it really is. We want to move that forward, and you don't want to get in the queue at state ed to be able to do that. So an emergency project declaration just helps us and assists us with that state education facilities management process to get that done faster and so that we can remediate that permanently. And then what is adable is what is left after we receive those recoveries, right? So that so there's those two pathways, getting that money back based on what the adjuster is, what the real cost of the project is, hopefully it's close, and then adability on the remaining of that amount. So that's what the board is moving forward.
Questions from board members?
I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity to discuss how and if we want to repair it exactly the way it was. For for those of you who don't know, it wasn't a classroom space or even a public space. It's a basically a storage area.
It's an office. It's an office.
And the gym teacher used it as an office, but there there aren't windows or anything. It's the sort of office I had for thirty-five years, I might point out, but. So anyway, sure, I'm presuming that this, we'll get the adjuster's opinion on things, and then we'll take a look
That's right.
at what Tetra Tech comes up with and all of that.
Absolutely. Typically, in these situations, Jill, it is to, you know, replace it in kind, but if there's other visioning that we want to do, that would be perfect for facilities conversation.
Great.
Can I ask, Jill, or are you asking because you have a specific vision or a possible idea?
No, I just wanted to, well, I wanted to do two things. One is that I just wanted to say, I hope we're not, even though we're saying, we're likely to say yes to the emergency, that I don't think we need to be emergent in our response, because it isn't like kids are being kept from learning or even that anyone in particular is is in great suffering because they can't access what they were using as an office space. More importantly, we need to have a big kudos out to our facilities people, Heather and Travis in particular, who spent much of the night there after that accident, making sure that the building was secured and that everything was in good, good condition for the next day.
In the wee hours of the morning.
In the wee hours of the morning, exactly.
Additional questions? And so to Jill's point that there is some time, and yet the sooner we get this process moving, obviously, the quicker we can repair. I do know having friends who have young children who are at Fall Creek, as they said, it was the easiest time they had getting them to school because they wanted to go see what had taken place. But then when they got there, they're also wondering when will their school be safe again. So I think that part of it is a perception, part of it is the reality, what's taking place. And so what we're being asked to vote on is folks, just we're all on the same page, is up to this amount of money. But there will be still be some conversations that are taking place about what the next process is. And I imagine we'll discuss briefly at facilities, right?
Thanks, everyone.
Any other, thank you very much. Any other questions about the consent agenda that folks have or discussion items? There's a personnel report, there's student report, there's the minutes of our last meeting, and and then the resolution for the emergency project. Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous for the folks who are present. Thank you very much. We will continue on with our agenda, and we will ask Dr. Brown to share some words with us.
Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you all for being here. Two items. The first one is in response, so that I'm not mandated to do something, all right? So any LACS student can request to participate or take a course at Ithaca High School. I think you all know that. It's important for you to also know that Drivers Ed throughout my tenure and before my tenure has been the most, one of the most requested courses and hardest to get into at our school. And I know you can continue to apply and hopefully get a spot there. The issue for us right now is to grow the program and having someone to teach it. We budgeted for, Sean, you want, Professor, you want to board when we purchased a Drivers Ed car. Well, the first Drivers Ed car in the school district's history, I'm gonna, this is gonna be part of my legacy, was the old superintendent's car. That we had to transition from being the superintendent's car because everyone in the state knew who it was, and I would get people following me and throwing stuff at it. So we transitioned that to real talk. We tried to. It was a purple one initially, and then we transitioned to, for some reason, we thought a bright red one was going to work. But I'll not forget, my son didn't like when people would pull up next to us and do, give us signals. So the the Drivers Ed cars that we've had over the years have been evolved. Now we, Ms. Verba and her team now includes it into our purchasing cycle. We are looking to purchase additional cars, but those cars don't come with a human. So right now, we're trying to grow the program and add adult support. I'm a certified Drivers Ed teacher, and I can't wait to retire one day and come back living here as a part-time educator, making minimum wages. I will be a Drivers Ed teacher. That's my dream one day, because that was the best job I ever had. It's on the record. Trust me. I hope the new superintendent hires me. But it's just real talk. So it's not about us not including you. There are a lot of folks who come to us asking for those spots, and we're doing our best to accommodate it, and the teacher is the biggest part. Cool. Please don't mandate me to come talk about it anymore, but we can talk about it at another time. This, the the second item is both professionally and personal. It's February. It's Black History Month, y'all. I, and it's personal because I've come from a family of educators, liberators, and I would call them abolitionists. I know family members, I have family members, including my mother, who have been engaged in conversations throughout their lives, where they knew they would never see the fruits of their labors, but they fought anyway. That's why I call them abolitionists. They would refer themselves as liberators and educators. So I know that in nineteen twenty-six, basically because of the work of, and, you know, some folks can quote me here, but if I'm wrong, just be patient with me. Carla G. Woodson and some folks, we had Negro History Week. Remember that? In the twenty-six, and, you know, this one folks, my grandfather was one who was around for that. But, you know, they were fighting in my little small town in the Jimco South at the time to make sure it was, we would represent the histories and the joys and the beauty of being black in this country more than just a week. So they fought. They reared my mama and they reared my pops in central Virginia to keep fighting. So they would come to board meetings like this and board of supervisors meetings to advocate for a month. So I'm sure, I think if, correct me if I'm wrong, Professor, the Ford administration officially, although we practiced it informally for a long time, for the first time in nineteen seventy-six, it was passed this thing called Black History Month. Remember that?
No, I don't remember it.
I know, I'm from a family of educators now, so I gotta get this right. Now, in a school in the Jimco South, it was still, we called it that back in the seventies, and I was in elementary school at the time. My mama would go to board meetings like this with her three minutes and ask for us to really, really use that month to celebrate the joy and excellence of black folks and so that we could be seen for just a month, because we had evolved from doing it for just a week. But we wanted that month. We wanted to make sure we were doing something throughout that month to celebrate the excellence that was rarely, if ever, represented in the curriculum, in the pedagogies, on the walls. See, this is where she, people hear me say this all the time. I hope that what I do here is inspire people to take my place when I'm gone, Stella. You see, because she said that to us, she You see, because she said that to us, she knew she would never see what I'm about to say right now. Yeah, we do Black History Month well in our schools, but a few years ago, we started doing a Black Lives Matter at Schools Week, but we went real deep. We went so far, we were so bold to say, we will center the experience of those who have been traditionally marginalized in us. Remember that? We will center the experience of our black and brown students and build pedagogies and curriculum and do things to focus on that, because everyone will achieve more, and we know that to be true. Where I'm going with this is we've transitioned or evolving, and I knew I won't see the fruits of what I'm about to share, and I know it's not always going to be popular. From doing the Black Lives Matter at Schools Week and focusing on Black History Month to celebrating this work all year round, we are going to be branding and rolling out celebrating black lives in the Ethic City School District year round. So folks who have been paying attention and been wondering why we want to do a Black Lives Matter at Schools Week, it's because I said so, all right? I asked for this to evolve beyond a month and a focus week to an annual year-round thing, knowing that it's going to be hard for us to do that, knowing that it's going to take a lot of planning, knowing that it's going to make people uncomfortable. But again, I know it will happen when I'm gone. So yeah, I, thank you for going on this journey with me, because this book, I see, I said, I said in my interview when I interviewed you here in 2011, I have a 50-year vision for this work, and I meant it. What I'm describing year-round may take up 50 years, but had my grandfather not had that 50-year vision for the work back in 1920s, we wouldn't be here today. So thank you for this opportunity, and please celebrate, but also celebrate year-round, what is, we calling, it's joys and excellence of black and brown folks. Thank you.
I feel like I said all the time, I love using silence just to let things sit. So thank you, Dr. Brown, for sharing. We will continue on with our agenda, which brings us to Agenda Item 11.1, the TST BOSIS Budget Presentation. We're delighted to have a guest join us. We'll proceed from there.
I want to thank you for allowing TST BOSIS to come in and do the presentation. I see a lot of familiar faces, and I see a lot of faces that I haven't seen before. So I thought maybe while we're getting things loaded up, I might just give a little background of what TST BOSIS is and what BOSIS in general is and how it works. So BOSIS is actually, actually an acronym. It's Board of Cooperative Educational Services. That's what BOSIS is. It's really not a word. It's a, it's an acronym. And really what it's supposed to be is for a lot of districts to, to use services, to buy services collaboratively. So what we do is we sell what's called a COSER, and a COSER is a cooperative service. Each one of our services, you can look at them as a, as a mini-company. So like our Career and Tech Program is a mini-company. They, they, they teach kids the trades, that type of stuff. Then we have the Exceptional Ed Program with, for all kids that need different kinds of services for exceptional ed things. We've got the Alternative Program for kids that need a different setting. So those are our, and then we have the P-Tech. I always forget about that one, the P-Tech Program over TC3. So those are our educational programs, and they're each a COSER, mini-company, if you will. The rest of the organization is made up of other services, such as the garbage service. That's a service that we do. The professional development services that we, that we provide. The districts say, we want to do a professional development on this particular item, or this initiative, or so on and so forth. So we do those as collaboratively as possible for the districts that are in the BOSIS. There's nine school districts that belong to TST BOSIS. The, the, the BOSIS, there's seven, 37 of us in the state. They're all made up of the districts, the school districts in their area. So like I said, we have nine, there's eight public schools, and then one special act, which is George Jr. That makes up TST. So we try to do everything we can do as collaborative things. Then we have the administration. So we have all these other services and then administration. So that's the, the three pieces of BOSIS. Educate, direct educational services for the kids, PD, so on and so forth, other types of services, and then administration. That makes up TST BOSIS. Aid is driven by that collaborative service. The, the, the state, years and years and years and years ago, decided that in order to make it so that districts could share and collaborate, they would then aid those services. So if a district decides they want to do something, and you have more than, more than one service, because it has to be a collaborative, shared service, we put that service together. If we don't put it together, and it's not something that we do, you can go to one of the other 36 districts in the state. Prime example is Erie One BOSIS does their policy service. There's no reason for TST to, to provide that. They do a great job. Go there. It comes through us, and that's what generates the aid, but go do it there. State aid planning at Quest Star is another example. Almost everybody goes there for their state aid planning. So those are examples that, that the districts do. Within that, there's seven RICS, Regional Information Centers. We're great on, on acronyms. So, so the RIC is, originally it was set up for when there was mainframes, and the mainframes were too expensive for districts to own. So the RICS provided that computer service thing to each of the districts long distance. So they were hooked up together. When you logged in, you were actually logging into a, in a computer in a server for us in Syracuse. So there's, like I say, there's seven in, in the state RICS. They provide computer services. I get dry when I talk. So a little bit, that's how kind of the background of BOSIS, I just wanted to see, you know, people that have not seen BOSIS, don't have any idea what it is. At least that's a little, little bit of that. Any questions with that, that I, I did a quick, that's a very quick overview?
David, I'm sure also is included in that overview. It's an invitation to come up to BOSIS.
Absolutely.
And tour the facilities and meet the folks as well.
We would love to see people come to BOSIS. Every time somebody comes to BOSIS and thinks, well, it's just that, you know, they, they do, they come up there and they see what we do and how it's done. The, the career and tech services that we do, the exceptional ed programs. If you can come up during the day, that's really when you get the wow, because we may be small, but we put a lot of things in place. So absolutely. If you'd like to come up and take a tour, absolutely. We would love to have you come and see what we're all about.
And Dave, I apologize. Would you introduce yourself to make sure we have it on tape for the viewing audience as well?
I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services. Typically, this is at, at least two of us come to this. Dr. Jeff Madison, as you know, many, many of you must know by now, he left TST BOSIS at the beginning of December to become the Deputy Commissioner of Albany. So good for the country or good for the, for the area, not so good for us. He was a great leader. But in the meantime, we, we keep things together. The, the district superintendent at BOSIS in Auburn is our interim. So he actually oversees both BOSIS, and obviously he can't be in both places at the same time. So we, we kind of run things and make sure everything is where it needs to be, and then keep him up in speed, up to speed and in the loop of what's going on. So normally, this would be at least two of us. We have in the past also brought the rest of the administration, so you can meet them. But we felt this year that was, I'll, I'll come out and do the presentation. I've been doing this for about 15 years now, so I know a couple of things about how we do it. Any questions with that?
Well, I just wanted to include an incentive for us to come to, to be invited to the culinary school.
Absolutely.
So that we can have lunch.
Monday is probably the only day that that won't work, because they don't, they don't make lunches or don't do the lunches on Monday because they're preparing. But Tuesday through Friday, Friday might be leftovers, but it, it doesn't matter if it's leftovers or not. It's always good. That's a, that's a fantastic place to go eat. So yes, absolutely. Come up during lunchtime. We'll, we'll do the tour. Yep. So what I, what I would like to do tonight is do a, a presentation about our programs, the budgets that are involved in all of our programs, our administrative budget, which is the one you folks vote on, and a few other things that, that about BOSIS that you'll, you'll be able to see. So we can start with the, with the next slide. Oh, that's me. I can do that. So this slide is, is, gives you a little oversight of what Ithaca is. We have one slide like this for every district, because every district is a little bit different, and it, and it gives you kind of a snapshot of what Ithaca is as far as BOSIS is concerned. The first number you'll see is an ARWADA. It's a resident weighted average daily attendance. That's a number that the state sends back to BOSIS as your size, and it's a weighted average. The calculation's about this long, that takes into all sorts of different things. Exceptional Ed has got a different weight than Gen Ed, you know, so on and so forth. So it's, it's really a number that says you are this size, and then we use that as a comparison to the rest of the folks in the, in the TST BOSIS. So any of our COSERS that are billed by different methodologies, and one of the methodologies is ARWADA. So if you're buying a service that is, is billed based on ARWADA, you would then be 4,922 over the total of what's, what's in BOSIS, which is actually the next number, 42.91%. Ithaca represents, that's your percentage of the whole of TST BOSIS. So that's, that's how we use that. Your aid ratio is 45, 45 cents on the dollar. So what that is, is for every dollar you spend for all aidable COSERS, you'll receive, you should receive about that in aid. There are certain ones that are not aidable. Garbage service used to be aidable when they started it, and then the state came back and said, we're not going to aid that. But because of the competition between the private sector and what we do, we can still do that without aid and still be very competitive with, with those. Another one that is not aidable is our Exceptional Ed Program. The Exceptional Ed Program, all of those costs are then stacked in the, in the aid for each student, and there's a threshold for each district that once the expenses for that particular student reaches that threshold, then there's what's called stack aid or high-cost aid, and those are ones that we send Amanda and your folks here calculate how much aid will be generated off of those high-cost students. So that's not BOSIS-aidable, because the stack aid is a better aid. Another one is a transportation coaster that we do for working with anything, transportation. Your transportation aid is better than your BOSIS aid. So we try to do the better aid, whichever it is. So you pay us without aid and then put it on your transportation expenses and generate aid that way. So those are examples that are not aidable. The ones that are is the administration, CTE, alternative. Most of everything is, is aidable for BOSIS aid. The one thing that, that drives everybody nuts is the, the only thing that's aidable out of a salary is the first $30,000. It's a number they set years ago. $30,000 is aidable. Anything over that is not aidable. All of the health insurance, dental, FICA, TRS, ERS, all the rest of the stuff is, is aidable. But they, they limit, they, they cap the aid on, on salaries at $30,000. So you'll hear that throughout the country, you're, throughout the county and the state, that we need to raise that, because it's not realistic. Just a commentary, if you raise that, they're probably going to drop your aid ratio, so, because the pie is not going to get bigger. But I just say that because that's my, my thought. So the next one down is the number of students you currently have in our CTE program. It's 141. The next one down, we bill our CTE program on a three-year rolling average. So instead of having spikes up and down on any particular year of kids that are coming through, we do a three-year rolling average, which then when Amanda's doing her budget, that's a fixed number. So no matter how many you send next year, it's already locked at 124, 127. The current is 124. So we do that on a three-year rolling average to keep that as level as possible. That's one of the biggest things that we try to do is to try to keep our costs as level as possible, not down, not steep up, is just in a steady trajectory rather than the spikes. A number of students in our Exceptional Ed Program, Special Ed Program, whatever you would like to call it, is 57.8. We don't cut kids in half, but we do bill based on day in to day out. So it's all based on an FTE, however many FTEs you have for the year, day in to day out, that's what we bill on. We do the same thing in our Alternative Ed Program. We do that one based on students in and students out, day in and day out. A number of kids that you currently have in our P-Tech Program is 13 over in Dryden, and the current contract amount is a little over 20 and a half million dollars. That's what it is currently. That represents about 34.45% of TST BOSIS budget. And you'll notice that that's 34, and your, your ARWADA is 42, but as the, the, the norm is the bigger the district, the less they buy of their size. You're big enough to do things on your own. You're big enough to have, you don't need a lot of itinerants, those types of things. You don't need as many BOSIS services. The smaller the district, the, the percent that they purchase is going to be bigger than their size. So that's, that's the norm, not only for TST, but also across the state. Any questions with that one?
Karen? Yes. Now, P-Tech on average, has it been around that number since it started? And when you said over in Dryden, is it in TC3?
It's a TC3, yep, yep, yep. So that's what's currently there now. This is the first year that it's fully operational. So it's a six-year program. So year one, obviously, you only had sophomore, freshmen in the program, and then sophomores and freshmen and juniors and sophomores and freshmen. This is the first year that are all, all freshmen through seniors and the two years of the students staying there and doing their TC3 graduate, graduation program. So this is the sixth year. Now we're fully, we're fully there as far as the number of students in the program.
And then you, for the future, you have some of the local companies that will connect, because these are students who will eventually graduate and with their two-year degree and then get possible employment.
So the P-Tech is actually designed differently for the location. Here, one of the focuses for our P-Tech is manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. The one in Benhamton is, is, is focused more on engineering, because you've got all the, the aerospace and BCI and all the ones that are down there. So their focus is more engineering. Ours is more focused on advanced manufacturing. So it's whatever was the focus of the area that it was going to be in is the focus of the P-Tech. And they did that on purpose to try to, to create a, a stream of students to then come into the workforce in that area.
Okay, quick question. So the current contract amount reflects the cost of the services, including the programs on the next slide?
The one on the next slide is actually what we're projecting the cost to be next year.
Right, but the list of those programs.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
How many total students were in P-Tech? And of that total, we got 13, correct?
Correct. There's 13, and I want to say there's 62 or 70, something, somewhere's in that range.
And the tuition per student?
I want to say it's around 14 right now. Yep.
I apologize, Dr. Brown. Can you repeat your question?
I felt like I was having a conversation with just, the tuition per stu, price per student.
So we do have a grant that supplies a fair amount of the money that's needed for the P-Tech. That was originally supposed to be a startup grant, and what I'm being told now, they're going to continue it. So that will certainly help that tuition rate, because it, it's a full-day program where Career and Tech is a half-day program. So technically, it should be about double what a CTE program is, because you're there all day instead of a half. But because of the grant, it certainly does keep that more in line with, with what the CTE program costs are.
I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly. You said the tuition per student is 62 or 70?
No, that's how many students are in there total. Yeah.
I know I didn't hear it correct. Thank you.
Yep. So this slide is, is a little snapshot of all the different COSERS, and, and all the COSERS are grouped into different sections. So all of our COSER numbers, like there's a 100 COSER, that's CTE-type of COSERS. 200 levels are all of our Exceptional Ed Programs. 300s are itinerants. So as you go down through, you'll see that they're, they're one through six as our COSER levels. So our Career and Tech Program proposed for next year, we're looking at around a 6.94% increase in the budget. When, when we create budgets at CTE or anything in, in BOSIS, we're actually creating a budget to supply a service that's being requested. So we send out an initial service request to all of our districts and say, what do you? So we send out an initial service request to all of our districts and say, what do you want us to do next year? So that went out in January, came back to us at the end of January. Now we build budgets to supply what's been requested to be supplied. So that's what drives this slide. These are all by requests, uh whatever the districts are asking us to do. So like in the C, in the career and tech, we added a construction trades program. And we added a second section of uh heavy equipment. Those are programs that are expense, more expense to the budget, if you will. So they're, they're going to drive not only the raises that we contractually have designed into our, our expenses. But they're also adding more programs. So you have to add more people, you have to add more equipment, a more, there's all the things you have to add. If you're going to add, add to a program. So. Most of these, you'll see if they're, if they're above the four, four and a half percent, it's because we're adding and districts are asking us to do more. Um, in these, exceptional ed, you'll see we're at four, seven, six. That's just about what it is for break even for. Uh, paying the contractual amounts that we have in our, in our contracts to uh, to hire. The itinerants, that one is all over the place, year to year, a district can add or subtract itinerants. What itinerants are. Is if a, if a district wants to have a teacher, anything other than a core, so it can't be math, science and social studies. Those by, by statute, BOSI's cannot do. But we can do art, music, uh, the other languages, um. Anything that's not a core course, we can do those in itinerant services. So a district can say, well, we only need a point five. We've got three of our own, but we need another half. And it's impossible to hire a half. So we'll hire a half for you guys. And then if another district needs another half or another point two or whatever, then we'll hire that person. And supply them to the districts in the, in the amount that you need. But we can go by hu- hire a full-time person to do that, which you then can do. By doing that, then it generates aid on that service also. So that's what the itinerants are. That's an example of the itinerants and you can see the, the different ones that are listed there as examples of the itinerant services. Uh, our instructional services, which would be the four hundred levels. Those are like the cooperative enrichment things, uh being able to send students to other things. We do part of that and City Bus BOSI's does another part of that. So you folks, all of our districts cross contract with City BOSI's to do some of that. And some of it we do for you folks. Um, the alternative school, the regional alternative school is in that. Um, so you can see the, the things that are in that type of service that we do. Instructional support, uh, the technology, the printing. Uh, this year I saw the districts adding more to their buckets for printing. So they pay to, to have the printing done and then they put money in their bucket so that they can have more printing done. So those are pretty much driven by the district saying, I'm going to put more money in my pot. So that I can use it during the year. So that will drive that budget because I have to put it in there. They want me to put it in, I'll put it in. Um, so that'll drive that, especially in that situation. Uh, the non-instructional, uh such as the, the bus driver training that I was talking about, our subcalling service. Um, when a, when a, a teacher, I think in Ithaca, I think it's a teacher, the assistants, nurses. Uh, they, when they're going to be out, they call into this subcalling service. And that will then place calls to try to find a sub for that, that person when they're out. So that's a service that BOSI's does for all of our districts. Uh, the, the waste removal service, the CBO, some, so on and so, so forth. Those are in the six hundred levels. The cross contract is, like I said, a district that can buy things from another BOSI's anywhere's in the state. You'll see that that one seems like it's low. Every year when we go out for this, and I went back and looked to see what they have been typically. That's about what they are when we do the, this presentation. By the time we get all done, it's about double that because the districts say, okay, yeah, we put that in there, but we really need to do this. And they'll buy more services that they need from the other BOSI's, mostly in the technology realm. Um, but they run those through uh in their second round. The second round of uh service requests go out, they're out right now. They went out the first of February and they'll be back uh the, the first part of March. Any questions with that one?
Katie.
So this might be skipping ahead a little bit, but are there any risks to districts of overestimating the services that they request? I see later that you mentioned that, that BOSI's is required to run a zero balance budget, right? So maybe you can just, maybe just take note of that question and answer it later, but.
I can, I can answer it now. What we do, and that kind of answers the part of the other, the other slide, but I'll do it now. So what we do is we bill the districts for the services that they signed up for. If we in fact don't need to spend all that money, we give that back in a refund. So at the end of June, we have to close the books, all the expenses that are associated with that. And then every dollar that's left over after we, whatever we've collected and minus what we've spent. We give back to the districts in the same fashion that they paid into that coaster. So if they paid in based on ARWADA or FTE or percent use or buckets of money. If you put it in your bucket and you don't spend it, you're going to get it all back. So yes, at the end of the year, we cannot have an unappropriated fund balance. By statute, BOSI's cannot carry over any money from year to year to year. Whatever's left, we give back in a refund and we do that in November every year.
Dave, why don't we just go ahead and answer the flip side of that question as well? We use more resources than we had budgeted for.
So what happens there is if you've signed up for fifty thousand dollars of something and you realize, Jesus, you know, we really need sixty thousand. There's a mechanism to do a coaster increase. And if we can supply the extra, we certainly will. Um, it's always tough, like with an itinerant service. If we're maxed out and you need more and we can't find more, then yeah, that, that's a part that gets a little tough. But like in the, in the printing services, if, if there's not enough money in the bucket. You add more money to the bucket, we could, we'll keep right on printing. Um, so there is a mechanism to do a coaster increase. Um, we will, we usually don't do a coaster decrease because if you decrease what you've signed up for. And we can't change the budget, it's going to increase the cost to everybody else. So we've always said that we won't decrease something for somebody if it has a negative impact for another district. Because on the flip side, it could be you on the negative side of that. So when, when, when a district says that's what we want, that's the, the, the unit price that we're going to come out with. And everybody is agreed to, that's, yes, we'll, we'll pay for that. Um, even if we've signed up for it and don't actually have to use it all. Typically, if you don't use it all, you have money left over and it goes back in the refund anyways.
Great, thank you.
Yep. So this kind of is a synopsis of the, of the screen before. Uh, overall, our budget is up five point six four percent, about three point two million, almost three point three million. And the ups and downs are really right off the screen before, which ones are going up, which ones are going down. Uh, we also do facilitate grants, uh, things that we, we can do and should do. Uh, we do facilitate grants, uh, like the uh, uh, PTEC grant. That's one of the ones that we do. We're also in the process of working on a grant for the health uh services. And if we get that one, that one will be a, a huge bump in that a year from now. You'll see that in this presentation. So we're always going out and trying to find, can we do grants for something to help, help uh, uh, support the cause?
I'm proud of that. But I do have a question. May I have a question?
Dr. Brown, please.
Thank you. Uh, that three point two million, um, what? It's thirty-three percent, I, I, I'm testing Amanda fiercely. So man, I'm just going to ask it out loud, maybe he can. What is that, what's that percentage? What would that look like for Ithaca? And then I'm trying, we're trying to figure out the overall percentage of our budget increase, just to BOSI's would be.
See, and that's the difficult piece because every district gets to choose or not choose to buy a service. So you're using less than your size, so you can't necessarily say that forty-two percent of that is yours. Because you're only, you're only purchasing what they have thirty-some percent of our budget is yours. So every district chooses every year to buy more or buy less or buy exactly the same amount of services from the previous year. So I don't know, as I can give you a hard and fast number.
That was a trailer because we're going to answer that question for our board later. It's going to be important for you to know how much of an increase just to BOSI's budget will be for us. Um, and how close that is to what would traditionally be the tax cap.
Yep.
Amanda, you have?
Amanda wants to answer. I asked that tonight.
We'll come back to it.
Okay. So what drives most of our budgets is people. And, and this slide really represents that, that piece of our budget. Uh, we're looking at about a four point seven eight percent increase in our budgets. We've got a couple of our, our contracts that are up for renewal. And if we're going to keep people, we're going to have to negotiate for those. Um, so you know, we're all in that same boat trying to compete with private sector and the rest of the world. Um, and if we don't, we won't have uh folks to work for us. Um, the eight point three percent in the health insurance, we have to uh budget for um all of the insurance for the active employees. And for any retiree that's going to come, go become a retiree that is eligible for health and dental insurances. So I have to budget more than actually the increase that's coming from the co-op because I'm adding people to it also. The retirees and then you hire a replacement, you're adding to that, that health insurance cost. Our retirement, I'm, I'm, I'm budgeting three point eight percent, three point oh eight percent increase in our retirement costs. Some of that is the rates are going up a little bit, but raises drive that. Everything is, is a, a percentage of the raises. And our other, the other costs, the dental insurance, the disability, FICA, unemployment, they're all, most of those are driven off the salaries. Any questions with that one? So our capital budget, um, anything, any, any capital expenses at T S T BOSI's. Such as our EPC, uh, and the, any, any rent that we rent space for. So at BOSI's, we rent space next door at the IC three for one of our, our current tech programs for the, for the young adults. We also rent space uh at PTEC uh for, for that. We also rent space downtown at the TC three building for our adult ed. I have to budget all of that rent in this budget. But for the adult ed, they reimburse this budget. So you folks actually don't pay the rent for the adult ed at TC three. But I have to budget it in this one. It's just, it shows up as a number.
Dave, you talked about how much you love acronym, maybe not you personally, but BOSI's may love acronyms, just for the community, EPC.
Energy Performance Contract.
Thank you.
Yep. So uh, you can do capital projects or you can do an energy performance contract. And when you do those, there's a guaranteed savings built into an energy performance contract. So you upgrade furnaces, you upgrade lighting, you upgrade different things. And then whoever's doing that EPC for you has to guarantee that you will uh return a savings. Uh, more than what it costs within eighteen years. That's the threshold of what they, the calculation is. So.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So like I said before, uh, BOSI's cannot have an unappropriate fund balance. So when we have, whatever we have left over after we do all the billings and all the payments. Uh, we return back to the districts in November, uh, and like I say, in the same fashion that we collected it. These are the reserves that we do have. And these are the only reserves that BOSI's can have by statute. So like I say, the unemployment, the insurance and flex were self-funded for dental. Uh, so we have to have money in there to cover claims as they come in. Um, there's also the flex spending money that the folks put in there. Um, so our year, our plan year runs September through August. So these numbers are all the numbers that were in our, in our audit as of June thirtieth. Um, so we have money sitting there that they can still collect during uh July and August. And the runout of September and October from the, the current plan year at that year. Our CTE reserve, uh, when I came to BOSI's, we had nothing in that. Um, what that is, is the CTE equipment is expensive equipment. You know, car lifts, uh, we put in a, a paint booth about ten years, I want to say ago. At seventy-some thousand dollars for the booth. Rather than to have those expenses hit the budget in one year and make the budget spike. What we do is we do a CTE reserve and it's set up with the state. That's what they said we could do. When you buy a piece of equipment, you depreciate it over ten years. So over ten years, the, the cost of that equipment goes into the reserve. With the, with the premise that at some point or another, you're going to have to replace other pieces of equipment. And you can take it out of the reserve instead of hitting the budget and making that spike in every one year. Again, we're trying to do whatever we can do to keep the budgets as, as smooth as possible. Our ERS and TRS reserves, uh, there again, we didn't have those when I first came. Um, we're, we try it when the times are good to put money in those as much as we can. Because we know at some point it's going to go the other way. Uh, during my tenure here, I've seen twenty-one percent in the ERS. So if that happens again, we can stave off some of that and not see that in our budgets. Any questions with that one? So this is the administrative budget. This is the one that you folks as board members and all of your counterparts in the other eight districts vote on. You folks vote on it just like your taxpayers vote on your budget in May. You folks will vote on this one for uh T S T BOSI's. So I spend a little bit of time with this one, just so you know what it is, so you know what you're voting on uh later, later in the year. Um, salary, you'll, you'll see pretty much all, all of it is, is. Probably in line with where things would be normally for salaries and fringe, so on and so forth. There's two lines on this one now that, and it used to only be one, but there's two lines in this one that you'll see a substantial jump in. The first one is a seven ninety-nine, the rand interest. We are one of the few BOSI's that actually borrows our budget. So what we do is, is little history on that, years and years and years ago. Um, the BOSI's didn't borrow the budget. So BOSI still has to make payroll and all the other stuff for Ju- July and August. So what the BOSI's had, uh, the districts had to do is they couldn't pay it because they didn't get their tax money. For you folks, it's in October, November, but there wasn't a cash flow to pay for that. So the districts would have to go out and do a short-term borrowing. And it costs the same amount for each district to borrow. So the, the powers that be at that time said, BOSI's, why don't you borrow? You can borrow once and we'll spread that cost over all of us. And then we'll, we'll reef, we'll pay that when, when we get our tax money, we'll pay that bill. So what we do is we actually don't bill the districts, you folks, until May. So the money that you collect in your taxes, you can now invest it, do something else. What we did, uh, and thank you very much, a year ago, when we came out and did this presentation, we did a twenty-seven and a half percent increase in the budget. Because the interest rates for fifteen years were point oh nothing. And then last year, everything come to life and we got a lot of interest to pay. So in order to continue to do that, we needed to increase this budget. So that we could then budget for the rand, for the interest that we had to pay on that borrowing. Um, I did some quick calculations just to, so that I could have some, uh, you know, a general what it is. We borrowed last, this past fall at four point six seven percent. I was very pleased with that because I had planned on somewheres in the five, the five and a quarter. We borrowed at four point six seven. We've been doing it so long now that the borrowing of the, the investment houses and the banks line up. They give us bids, they want our money, they want to borrow, lend that money to us. They know it's, it, we're going to borrow it, we're going to receive it in November and the end of June, you're going to have a check. Or ACH, whatever, the new, the wires. So they know that that's a, that's a safe investment and there's no muss, no fuss. So they actually do give us very good rates. So what I did is I took the thirty-four million dollars that we actually borrowed uh last fall. And said, if you took that and could invest it at five percent. And I know you could do that because we were doing it at five point two and five point four. So putting in a CD and letting it set, it's okay. That in itself generated just shy of a million and a half interest dollars to this area, to the region. So it, thank you, thank you for taking that leap with us and, and doing that. I just wanted to bring it back out that it works. And, and the aid and everything that's driven on that is on top of that. But that generated interest back to our, our region uh by doing that. Some of my counterparts are all clamoring, why can't we do that? SED won't let any new BOSI's do this. We're grandfathered and there's, I think there's either one or two other BOSI's that do it. And SED said, if you stop, you cannot start again. So we are grandfathered and it, it works, it works, but.
What is SED?
Uh, State Education Department, sorry, acronym. So the other one on there, so you'll see that I bumped that again because at this point, I don't know what the interest rates are going to be a year from now when we go to borrow. I have to have enough in the budget that whatever the interest rate is, we can. I have to have enough in the budget that whatever the interest rate is, we can pay it. I will only pay what we have to, but I have to at least plan for the worst case scenario. The other one that's in there is the retiree health insurance. Anyone that retired from T S T BOSI's or any BOSI's actually. Doesn't matter where you retire from, C T E, exceptional ed, maintenance, administration, it doesn't matter where you'd retire from. If you're eligible for retiree health and dental insurance. That expense has to be by statute put in the administrative budget. It can't go in the C T E program, it can't be, it can't be in the program they came from. It has to be in the administrative budget. So that's why that one is in there. I have to plan on the increase and any new retirees that are coming in. And then every year or two, I reevaluate to see, are there any of them that no longer need it? And then I will reevaluate that, readjust that. But that's, so those are the two big drivers in this, this budget. Drives it to six point eight. You'll see previously, the interest that I've put in for in income, I put in seventy five thousand because I never know exactly what we're going to do. I put in two hundred that I'm going to, I'm planning on taking in for next year. We're about three, three hundred and fifty for this year. So I'm always conservative on these. I'm going to bring the worst case scenario to folks. We're never going to come to you and say, I didn't budget enough. So that's where we are when you take those expenses or those incomes back out. We're at about a four, seven, five increase in our administrative budget for next year. Any questions with that? Because that's the one that you folks will vote on. So between April sixteenth and April thirtieth of every year, there has to be a vote on two things, the, the budget. And board members on the T S T BOSI's board. There's three seats that are up for our board for next year, Groton, Lansing and Newfield. And then you'll, so you'll vote on April twenty fourth for, like I said, the budget. And for those three people that are running for the, for the seats at BOSI's.
So Dave, just for our new board members, the component districts, each component district votes to put forward a nominee. And even while it may not be the Ithaca City School District nominee, we are still asked to vote to approve what our component districts have put forward to us.
Correct. And we actually have had an instance twice where a district didn't put somebody up and somebody from one of the other districts actually sat in that seat. So we had two, for instance, one year, we had two Dryden people. But one of them was actually the Lansing rep. Even though they didn't live, and there's no statute that says they have to live in the district. It just says we have to have nine from our districts. But each, each district does usually put somebody up and that's the one that we usually go with for the, for the voting process, but anyways.
Okay, so quick question. So the regulatory oversight of BOSI's is NICE Ed and this collective of districts?
Correct. Yep, there's rules and regs that come from, from S E D. That these are coasters that you can do. If we want to add a coaster, we have to apply to do that coaster. So at that point, you have to say, what is it you're going to do? What is it the districts are asking you to do? How much is the budget? Who's involved? Who's in, in, on the, when you apply for that? And then after that, then it's, are you, are you sharing? Are you doing, so you, we can't take a contract from a, from a contractor and just sell it to the districts. BOSI's has to be involved. If we're not involved, then BOSI's in doing something, we're just buying and selling. So BOSI's has to be involved in the process. So that's one of the regs also that, that we adhere to.
And Dave, I apologize, I always get this wrong, there's a thirty one or thirty seven.
There's thirty seven BOSI's in the state.
Yep. So from the seven hundred and whatever, seven hundred and fifty plus school districts funnel into the thirty seven BOSI's. And all those, I know district superintendents, the BOSI's superintendents all have pretty regular meetings, right? About once a quarter, they all get together as well and do their own training, have conversations about what's taking place throughout the state. What they foresee happening in the future. So I think it'd be important for folks to know that there is also a network of those superintendents that engage with each other.
So in the, in the BOSI setup, there's the thirty seven BOSI's, then there's what those called J M T, Joint Management Teams. So the, the joint management team for the central New York is city BOSI's up in Oswego. Syracuse, O C M, Keogah BOSI's in, in Auburn and T S T. That's the, the joint management team of central New York. Then you have the western region, the eastern, there's, there's different regions that, that are set up as joint management teams. So we tie, we try as, as BOSI's to do things collaboratively. And then within that, all the superintendents meet in each BOSI's to collaborate. The superintendent at the BOSI's, which is called actually a district superintendent, has two jobs. They oversee the BOSI's region and the BOSI's itself. But they are also part of their job is they're the liaison, they're working for the state. So they're working for the Commission of Education and the BOSI's. So they, they actually have two jobs. Any other questions? Very good. I thank you for taking the time to let me come in and present our budget for next year.
And I can share, of course, your contact information in case any board members do have additional questions, they can reach out to you, especially about the numbers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep. And we would low out what, we would love to have your folks come up. Just let me know or let up one of us know. You can call any of us, we'll, we'll do that.
We'll be in touch.
All right.
All right, the folks who are want to keep moving forward. Excellent. We'll move on to next agenda item was the academic calendar update eleven point two. I don't know that we are, my apologies, Ms. Tucker, are we voting on this this evening? So then, yes, we'll entertain a moment.
To accept the twenty twenty three, twenty four academic calendar with the I H S caregiver conference day.
By Moira, second by Jill. We'll ask you to speak to it and then we'll see what other questions folks may have.
Lovely. Sounds, sounds great. So hello, good evening. My name is Lily Talcott and I get to serve as the deputy superintendent here in the Ithaca City School District. And Ithaca High School educators, including teachers, mental health staff, administrators, education support professionals. Have seen some of the great work that's beginning to take flight at our middle schools around caregiver engagement and communication. And, you know, with close consultation with the regulations regarding minutes and days of instruction. It does look like Ithaca High School can also take a caregiver, a full caregiver conference day on March fourteenth. So we talked about this a little at our last full board meeting and now we're asking the board to vote on this. We did receive one comment through the Let's Talk portal. And that comment indicated that it was super important for caregivers to have secondary students have the same schedule as their elementary students. Because the older children may need to care for the elementary children. So that was the, the one piece of feedback that we received that just like to put out there in public.
And we thank you for sending that around as well. Right. And that is what's happening.
Right. If you were to vote on this, vote yes, then that's exactly what, what, what happened.
Questions?
I'll just make a comment and that's that. I think this is a great thing when my son went from middle school, well, from elementary to middle school to high school. I, I was stunned that there wasn't any sort of obvious mechanism for us to be able to talk with his teachers. So I think this will make a big step toward improving that for people.
Yeah. Big shout out to our educators for coming up with this idea.
There's no questions or comments?
I guess I'd be curious what our high school representatives might have to say about this. Because as I reflected on it, I thought only positive things. It sounded like a great idea that I, I've appreciated the increased communication at the middle school level, I have two middle schoolers. And so I'd be curious just if this is something that they have immediate reactions to. If not, that's also okay.
As long as it's a day off of school, I mean.
It is a day on, not a day off.
I definitely think it's a, I definitely think it's a great idea. My only question, it's not a concern, it's just a question is, I wonder how that would be logistically possible, considering that there's so many more classes at the high school and so many more teachers. I mean, I remember in elementary school, you just had maybe sixteen kids in a classroom and the teacher could just one by one go through all the parents with like twenty minute conferences. But I just wonder how that would happen at the high school. I'm just curious about that.
Thirty second conferences. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, there's, there, it certainly won't be perfect the first, really honestly, a couple of times that we do it. But at middle school, you know, we really worked through a system of, of working with the teachers who hadn't had communication with caregivers yet. And really wanted to coordinate and focus in on that and then open it up to the other folks as well. So there's sort of a, you know, imperfect, but a prioritization that takes place.
I would say even my experience would also be the same, like even if I had an opportunity to meet with the class, right? Or a period that that would have been beneficial, some sort of contact. And I always appreciate something that Ms. Talcott says is that this will be year zero of this program, right? So it's going to be a learning experience and we'll learn from it. And I know you'll be in conversation with folks and we'll continue to try to find ways to improve it as we move forward. So I do think it's an innovative way to try to approach. So kudos to all the folks who put work into it.
And to be clear, this is an additional day, day off, day on, I don't know the difference. But this is an additional one, not a shift of one on the calendar.
Correct.
Especially if we have no more snow. I just, I just jinxed us. All right. Hearing no more, we'll call the question, all in favor. That is unanimous for the folks who are present. Thank you very much. And we'll continue with our agenda. That brings us to a couple of policies. And I will yield the next part to our colleague, Moira Lang.
It's me. And so I think Amanda or Dan, Dan's coming down for the first one.
And the third?
So it all banned too?
No, no, there's just, there are just a few policies. The first one is sixty two fifty three program fees. It's a, it's a really brief policy. It's just a sentence, really. It's about regular day school programming. And curriculum, it really basically says that we're not charging, there'll be no fees for regular day school programming, curriculum courses, tutoring, remedial courses. And that they're all available to the Ithaca City School District students. The one edit that I, that I made was I took out material fees from the original policy, because this policy is only focused on program fees.
So real quick, well, Dan, we'll have to go back and do a policy that we skipped over, but that's perfectly fine. But for sixty two fifty three program fees and for our first reading, we used to have a mechanism on our policies that we would say if it was a state policy, a federal policy or a local policy. And so I guess I'm inquiring, do we know if this is a state, federal or a local policy? That's, that's fine. And it's something that we may want to consider as we continue. Folks may want to know what is a state mandate, they may think that we shouldn't have this policy, but they should know it's a state mandate. Sometimes it's a federal mandate and sometimes the district has some leeway in terms of what we choose to do or we get to decide to do. But this is a policy that we are, is a first reading and we'll, what, that we'll be voting on and sending it back to the policy committee.
And I can come back with more information, answer your, your question better as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And usually in our policy book, it says what kind of policy is, whether it's mandated or local. So we'll find that out. Dr. Berman will find that out.
Yes.
We'll be looking at this, you know, at least for thirty seconds, the next policy committee meeting.
Any questions from board members about the policy? Again, this is a first reading, it will be sent back to the policy committee for a review and then brought back for a second reading and adoption. Hearing.
We haven't moved it actually.
We have not.
Okay, so I move policy six two five three program fees for a first reading.
Second.
Moved by Moira, second by Jill. Any additional conversation and discussion? All in favor for a first reading? Unanimous who, who's here? Dan, I'm going to ask you to go back and talk about six two zero one memorial funds for a first reading.
What policy right now?
Uh, six two zero one memorial funds, agenda item eleven point three.
Amanda did one, one, just title change.
Don't go too far, Dan. I think like you're.
Ours is super simple. It's just updating per the auditors, where the funds are housed, right? So that's all it is.
And I saw the policy was originally in nineteen eighty nine, is that what it was? And so all we're doing is moving where it's housed.
It's, it's just because it used to be per the auditors housed in trust and agency and now it's moved out of that. That it's not the, the right place to, to actually house those funds.
All right. So I will move policy six two zero one memorial funds for a first reading.
Second.
Moved by Moira, second by Jill. Additional questions or comments? I like how you all shake your head. Fantastic. We'll call the question, all in favor. Unanimous for who's present. Thank you very much. Six seven zero one inventory tracking for I C S D.
That is, that is definitely mine, yeah. So this one's connected also to sixty nine, ten, that's coming up a little bit later. This is inventory tracking for I C S D. I worked with Sydney Wade on this, we made some edits. Changed it, we deleted title programs because it's for all programs. We also looked at tracking of fixed assets from five hundred to a thousand. We wanted to keep in line with the new language of inventory control. We found out that the federal government and New York State both cite five thousand for fixed assets. And we wanted to come somewhere in the, in the middle or be somewhat conservative. We also changed some language for review to five years. So it's consistent with district, with our district insurance company. We also look to change, C biz is referred into this policy. We wanted to change the language to not make it specific. We also added a reference to sixty nine, ten for disposal of surplus property as well. Any questions?
Okay, I will move policy six seven zero one inventory tracking for I C S D for a first reading.
Second.
We're rolling. Moved by Moira, second by Jill. Any additional questions, comments? All in favor? Unanimous for who is present. It brings us to gen item eleven point six, policy eight three three zero, author is authorized use of school-owned materials and equipment.
I'll stay until.
Hello. So a policy, this, this policy eight three three zero and eight three three two are both small revisions in response to the same audit we've been referencing and we talked about previously. In the case of eight three three zero, it's just modifying the, the language around computer use and how and under what circumstances the district may ask for compensation, you know, compensation for lost, stolen or broken devices. In this poli- previous policies, it, it stated that it was for any broken device, we could try to get that cost back. And this, it's adjusting it to a, that the individuals may be liable, it will say, for losses occurring above five hundred dollars. So that would better reflect our actions and change it so it's less punitive. So if someone, this was written originally in two thousand and ten where there's some laptops, but not a lot. Now everyone has mobile devices all the time. Now everyone has mobile devices all the time. And if someone were to drop something, previous policy would be basically me that you had to pay immediately for it. So that's the big adjustment. And then also just changing some language to say devices are intended to support district-related purposes and businesses. It's a modification from previous language that said it was first, like only educational use only ever. This is an acknowledgement that computing is immobile and often, you know, folks are using these all the time. So if someone like checks something, we're, we're not making it as punitive. Those are the adjustments for that one.
It's amazing. Think about two thousand and ten and then what we've experienced over the past fourteen years, right, that the use of technology has changed completely.
Yeah.
So our policies obviously need to be updated. So thank you for that.
I just have a quick question.
Please.
Before or after we move? Do you have a general sense for how often devices? What's our device churn? Like how often is there damage?
So most of our sort of laptops are targeted to have five-year life cycles. So any, most devices will usually live between three and six years, depending.
And are they damaged frequently? Is this something?
Um, devices are, this is a longer discussion. I'd happy to have, but much better, damage is much less than it used to be. When we first deployed Chromebooks in probably two thousand and thirteen, you know, those devices were new, hadn't been tested by our companies. Now they have rubber edges, all sorts of ways to keep, sort of keep them fixed and working. So much less.
Dr. Brown, you're gonna, do you want to speak to that?
I don't know if I want to ask it. A loss rate those first years was pretty high, was it?
A loss rate? I'll say for Chromebooks because staff devices, it's a sort of, no, it's different. But our early loss rates were, I think about fifteen percent, but much less now.
Not to the level of sporks, but.
Yeah. And by loss, yeah.
And I'd also recommend, and I don't know, we haven't done this in a while, but I know folks are touring different facilities, right? We, an invitation to go to BOSI's, but if you have not been to the Hancock Street, it'd be good to see the, the extremely hard work that folks are doing.
Absolutely.
To save devices as well that.
Yeah. And we've had student help desks that folks have helped with as well, while at the high school. It's great work's done. Great work is done there as well.
So let's begin with the first policy. If that works for the.
So I'll move policy eight-three-three-zero authorized use of school-owned materials and equipment.
Second.
Moved by Moira, second by Jill. Any additional questions? And this is also, these are all first reading policies. All in favor? Unanimous for who was present. And I don't know if we need additional conversation about policy eight-three-three-two, use of cell phones, which has also changed dramatically since the last time we've done this policy.
Just a couple of comments on that. Two changes, just adding some language around other less costly alternatives. We've included the word phrase desk phone and, which wasn't there, but we have those now. And we previously did not have phones deployed across our entire district.
I have to ask, how many pagers do we have out there?
We were, this came up. I think there's a, there might be a handful, but we didn't, we want to, let's, let's keep that for the next round of revisions. In two thousand and thirty or something.
Pendulum back to old school tech?
Yeah.
So also software application, because that's, that's a, that's there. The other thing is just changing, again, acknowledging that folks have devices and so taking out the phrase only in anything other than incidental private use is prohibited and just sort of just saying it's for district business purposes. So just softening the language there to, to be in compliance with our audit. That's it.
Sure. I think I know the answer to this, but this is about the use of the cell phones. We had several discussions during last year's budget talks about what seemed to be an awfully expensive bill for our cell phone usage, the district's cell phone usage. You mentioned that this might allow some less expensive alternative.
This policy doesn't, doesn't necessarily allow or disallow that. It just states that where such phones should be provided only when a less costly alternative is not available. So if we have a better alternative, we should use that. So that's, and that's what.
So nothing on, in this would preclude us making a change to something that's less expensive?
No, I mean, this is just, this is just, but it's on us to look at the, the, the use case for cell phone and then make a determination. Do we have tools that already do this? That at a lesser cost or is this the right, or is this cell phone an appropriate use here?
Jill, I know this is, you know, bureaucracy takes a long time and I'm gonna look at Ms. Verbo to see if this is a possibility. Because we already set our expectations for the audit committee, but I wonder if this is an item that we'd like to dig in a little deeper in the audit committee about cell phone usage, if that's something that folks would, or maybe we can discuss that audit committee at some point in time. Just to answer your question about.
Great.
Any additional questions, comments? All in favor? Unanimous for who is present. Fantastic. Well, the next two policies are for a second reading and adoption. And yeah, I'll yield to Moira.
Okay, so policy six-nine-one-zero disposal of unneeded property. And Dan, Dr. Dan Bryman has come to speak to this.
True. So the impetus was is to align this with the inventory tracking policy, which we, we just went over sixty-seven oh one to look at the, look at the language of how we identify fixed assets. Also, the last time it was looked at was December seventh, two thousand and ten. We also, a lot, we did the same thing where we aligned it with the, we changed five hundred to a thousand and we wanted to be consistent again with the new language and inventory control. And it's been through multiple times through policy. So I think that's really about it and where we're at right now.
Questions?
I'll move policy six-nine-one-zero. I'm looking at the actual text and it just.
Disposal of unneeded property.
Yeah.
Disposal of unneeded property because the, the text of the policy itself says title of surplus property. That needs to be corrected. For a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Moved by Moira, second by Jill. Any additional dialogue or questions before we vote to adopt? All in favor? Passes unanimously for folks who are present, which brings us to our last policy of the last policies. No, policy, because we're combining. So please, Moira.
Okay, so this is simply, I don't think we changed anything, did we?
There's a few small adjustments. There's a few small adjustments.
Okay, so basically what we were doing was combining two separate policies, one that covered confidential employees and one that covered managerial. Yeah. Into one, but what are the changes?
Let's see, on the second page, there's a singular sentence in, which is the second or the first full paragraph that was taken out from that previous paragraph because it was misleading. Because it seemed like it was referencing back to the, the previous sentence. So it just separate that out. And then in the first number one, it's there's a list of titles and then also, and then next administrative assistant, we had to note of, so I, the parentheses is there and it says confidential. Because it does, for the administrative systems that are deemed confidential. So that's why it's in parentheses there. Those were the only modifications, other than, you know, the whole policy, just combining those pieces of managerial and confidential.
Okay, so I will move for a second reading and adoption, policy ninety-two-zero-point-two terms and conditions of employment for managerial and confidential employees for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Moved by Moira, seconded by Jill. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Unanimous for folks who are here. Thank you very much. Thank you for the hard work of the policy committee. Thank you for the team for helping us in drafting these policies and answering questions. At this point in time, I don't believe we have any other district items. Though we do have a facilities committee meeting on Thursday, starting at four forty-five right here in this room. And then at six P M, we have our finance committee that will be happening. And we are anticipating holding a special holding meeting at six P M on Thursday, which will be announced probably sometime this evening to let folks know. So with that being said, we'll call the meeting to a close. Have a good night, good folks. Thank you for all your work.